Okay, now we're on the air. Will this meeting please come to order? It's 7:00. And if you'd like to join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have something I'd like to say before public comment. There has been a concern raised by a community member about an incident that I precipitated, which might or might not involve the right to know law. It's always good to get feedback from the public. It forces us, or it inspires us, to look at policies and procedures and to learn more from what I consider a very difficult law. And we're doing our best. And I am sorry that I precipitated this particular incident. And we are looking at it. And at the next meeting, we will have a training session on the right to know law again, as well as a review of my discretion, right or wrong. And obviously, I'm sure I'm right. Just kidding, just kidding. Right or wrong, it's a good... You know, you learn more from crisis than you do when you're totally comfortable with what you're doing. I wouldn't call this a crisis, but it is an opportunity for learning. And we do want to learn. So with that...
Dean Rubina Lee. I'm sure I speak for everyone when I say we'll visit you in the slammer.
Okay. Give me a deserved rest. Well deserved.
No, I just wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Morse on his first successful year here. It's his anniversary, and I know, I appreciate having him here. I think everyone else does, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none? We have a request from a board member.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Request that in the agenda, we move up school board committee updates, sustainability coordinators, and green team members, because several of the green team members are here in the audience. And instead of making them wait till the end of the meeting, if we could put them up higher in the agenda, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay. Is that motion, no? Just as long as everybody agrees, no objections, hearing none, we'll move it to right here. Do you want to take it away from there?
Well, yeah, I'd like to have Dennis Harrington come up and just introduce the green team members. These are new positions for the Sustainability Committee, and which worked very hard in a number of interviews, and a law fairly involved process trying to get everybody together. And I'll let Principal Harrington.
Well, tomorrow morning, we will be meeting with all the principals to get off on a good footing for next year. But I'd like to introduce you to four out of the five green team leaders. Sid Scarono, who will be located at Mohairamit, couldn't be here because she's out on the soccer field right now, coaching. So she will be at Mohairamit. Emily Spognardi, did I pronounce that? Will be our group leader. She's going to lead the five of them when they meet together and coordinate the efforts across the district. And she will also work at the high school with Kathleen Hanlon. And at Massway will be Maggie Morrison. And at the middle school will be Mary Caulfield. And I'd just like to introduce you to them. And I believe there's a short resume in backup for each of them, give you some idea of what their backgrounds are. And we're very fortunate to have them. And I hope that it helps us to continue to diminish our ecological footprint. So, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Are you proposing that we take the motion to approve?
I would ask the board to consider the motion, a motion to appoint the sustainability green team nominees, as Dennis introduced them.
Kenny.
I move to accept the sustainability green team members as presented by Dennis Harrington.
Seconded by Tom. Discussion. Anne.
Madam Chair, I am interested in whether or not there were any current Oyster River staff who were interested in this position, not just folks who are already embedded into our district and know... The learning curve would be shorter.
The person who can answer that question is out of the room. So you want to grab Dennis, please?
Well, I can tell you, I was on the interview.
Oh, okay, thanks.
There were none.
We had no internal candidates. Thanks.
Kenny.
I would say, though, that Sid Scarono has been, she's been a substitute teacher at Mohairamit. She was a full-time teacher at Mohairamit, and she's been in the school tirelessly, even when she's not been employed by the district, meeting the needs of the children of our district.
If I could continue with my line of thought...
Maybe you'll ask a question I can answer.
Dr. Morse, I consider it my job and my obligation to be the gatekeeper for how we spend funds in the district. And while the board was given the authority by the voting public to create your green team and allocate up to $4,000 per green team member, if you could please share the justification for allocating the full $4,000 amount when there is no existing position like this that provides us with any indication of the value that we get for allocating $4,000?
Yep. Thanks, Anne, for the question. You're absolutely right. There is no precedent for how we're going about in establishing the green team, other than the voters have indicated that that's what they wanted through their vote. Like you, I do believe in accountability. And part of the discussion I've had with Dennis and the Sustainability Committee is an accurate record-keeping of the time that's spent, so that we can have a better sense of the value of these positions a year down the road. So it is a little backwards to the way we would normally do business, but the way that the process works, there was no choice but to do it in a format that we've done it in, and then come back to the board and say, here's what we did, here's the hours we put in, and it's justified or not justified when we complete the first year.
So your expectation is next year, there will be a review of the stipend amount and whether or not...
Absolutely.
$4,000 is justified enough?
Yeah. It's not just a question that you had, it's actually a question the Guild had as well. When I talked to them about the positions, they were uncomfortable establishing a value as well, because there's just no precedent. And we could not find anything that was even remotely like this, in terms of the way it came before the board, the voters. And so ultimately, we'll do the accounting as we go through the year.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Further discussion?
I'm confused about what you said. So will these individuals receive the full stipend?
They'll receive their stipend as they do the work, up to $4,000. So we'll establish an hourly rate. The hourly rate through the contract, if they were teachers, would be about $34 an hour. But I'm suggesting to the Sustainability Committee that we use $25 an hour as the benchmark which to start accumulating the hours and see how that time is used. $4,000, quite frankly, seems like a lot of money in one context, but depending on the work they do for the district, they could easily, you know, consume that and more.
May I have another question? So I'm just curious, for the first year, what is expected to be accomplished at each school or district-wide? If we could get kind of a summary, so we know kind of what their first initial initiatives will be, what they're going to be doing?
So that is exactly what Dennis alluded to in the first meeting tomorrow. We need to have them on board before we could have that discussion.
Oh, okay, so we don't know that?
Right. We know the broad goals that were established through the warrant.
Okay.
We now will apply those broad goals against each building. And it's very possible that what's happening at Mohairamit may not be what's happening at the high school, depending on the needs of the high school.
Okay.
So we'll come back with those, as we have that for you to review.
May I ask, so will the building, who is going to determine what those priorities are?
The building principal and the green team together. That's the meeting that Dennis has set up for first thing tomorrow.
Have you thought about maybe bringing the PTOs in or something like that?
No, we hadn't thought about bringing the PTOs in, because, you know, it's been a sustainability effort.
Okay.
So I think we're okay with the first meeting being the principals and the green team members. They know their buildings, and they know the initiative of the last several years through the sustainability. So I think we'll be in a good place to start tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
So just to be clear, you said this $4,000 amount, that's the maximum amount?
Correct.
Right? You can't go over that, right?
Correct.
Okay, but it could be under that, if the hours are under.
Right.
Okay.
Does the minute say up to 4,000?
Yes.
Then, I understand, thank you.
And that's just for two people, right?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's $4,000, up to $4,000. Well, it's six people, because one set of people are sharing the responsibility.
Okay.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? All in the affirmative, six in the affirmative?
Thank you.
Motion carries. I forgot to mention that Al Holland is not here. He's on the...
On the road.
He's on the road.
Literally.
Okay, so now we go back to the actual agenda.
Continuing along board items, Madam Chair, the next motion I'd ask the board to consider is the approval of our A-high-school guidance teacher resignation. Laura Ramon Ranoni has moved with her husband. He's been offered a presidency in a college, and so they are leaving the district. And that, obviously, Laura wants to go with her husband, so the result is that she's resigned her position, effective August 15. And we should take the time to say thank you to her for her work for the district, for the years that she's served.
Anne.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the motion to accept Laura Ranoni, one of our Oyster River High School guidance teachers, resignation with regret. Personally, a great deal of regret. She was both of my sons' guidance teacher and served them well.
Regret and thanks?
Regret and lots of thanks.
Okay. Seconded by Tom. Discussion. Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
Next motion for the board to consider, next four motions, actually, are affirmations. You may recall that the board gave me the authority to do summer hiring, so that we didn't lose quality candidates to other school systems. But at the same time, I want to make sure the board knows the decisions that were made and who we hired. So the way that I have crafted this with the chair and vice chair is to do an affirmation of my decision. So the first one is a motion to affirm the hiring of a high school science teacher. In this particular case, we're talking about Tracy Binkoski. Todd and his team were very excited about bringing Tracy on, and you can see from her credentials, she's well-served to do a great job for us.
I make a motion to approve Dr. Morse's affirmation of the high school science teacher.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Tom. Discussion.
Dr. Morse, your and Todd's incredible work at redesigning the science program for incoming freshmen, where every child, as a freshman, will take biology.
Mm-hmm.
I read through her resume, and I didn't see biology as being a strength of hers. Could you share with me how we're covering those bases?
I would turn to Todd. Can you tell us how you're going to assign Tracy and manage to take care of her biology needs?
Yeah, the position that she was hired to fill was a position that was primarily physical science. And actually, where, with the changes that we're making, we also anticipate, like, a multi-year shift of who's teaching what. And what attracted us about her the most was she had multiple areas of certification. She actually is five to nine general science certified, so because biology is a freshman general science course, she is qualified to teach that course. And she's also got chemistry certifications, well, Earth Science. So it gives us a little more flexibility, and we anticipate next year, the issue will be chemistry, as we make the same shift. And so she will give us a little more flexibility in that. And so we've been able to move things around to cover the biology. And we still are in the process of hiring that Point Four position that you approved earlier as well.
And I also would want to say, Anne, thank you for the compliment to me. But the fact is that it was Todd and Carolyn and the high school science staff that came forward with the recommendation. So they deserve the credit for moving biology into the freshman year.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, sorry. I noticed that the amount budgeted for this position is less than what we are hiring. Can you comment on that?
Sure. As we go through the hirings, you'll see other hirings this evening that are less than what was budgeted. This particular position was a first-year science teacher who left, who was at the base salary, so there's no way we could hire anybody less than the cost of that position.
So would that show, was that going to come all out of the high school budget? Or is it...
Yes, it comes out of the high school budget.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You'll see offsets as we go through the evening.
Okay.
And we are keeping a comprehensive list of hires and so forth. So probably in August, we'll be able to show you a summative of how the hirings went, because there's always going to be somebody who's more expensive, there's always going to be somebody who's less expensive, as we go through the process. So we're keeping a running record. No problem.
Further discussion? Hearing none? Could I have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you. This evening, I also would ask for affirmation of the hiring of a Point Four math position. And again, we are actually kind of fortunate. Point Four positions are very, very difficult to fill. In fact, we're struggling with the other Point Four. It may come back in August with a different solution than what we proposed. But this evening, we do have a qualified math teacher for your consideration. As you can see, at Point Four, the salary is pretty nominal, at $15,348. And again, Todd and his team did a great job, and I'm pleased to nominate this person or put this person in front of you for affirmation this evening.
Anne.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the hiring of Oyster River High School Point Four math teacher position.
Seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Hearing none? Could we have...
Just for all of our own edification, a reminder, that Point Four position, is that replacing the calculus teacher who retired?
Go ahead, Todd.
Not directly, no. You're referring, we did have a part-time position that was eliminated in last year's budget, and we shifted things around. So our AP classes are being taught by Bill Reeves and Peter Harwood now. This position is geared towards dealing with a bubble of enrollment that we have in the freshman class. We have almost 200 freshmen, as opposed to the 148 we had this year, so we needed to adjust. So this position will help us absorb those extra numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is this a one-year position?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Could I show a show of hands, please? Just because I'm curious, do the names go in the minutes, once we make a motion to...
Are the names in the minutes? Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Continuing along this line, I'm asking the board to affirm the hiring of a technology integration specialist. Here's a good example of where we ended up having to hire much closer to the top, largely because the candidate pool was either very green or very experienced. And when Jay and I talked through this particular position, since this is the first time we've had a position like this in the district, we really wanted to make sure we had the best possible candidate. I interviewed the candidate after Jay's team did. I thought she was phenomenal, and I'm proud to put her before you for your consideration.
Anne.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the hiring of the Oyster River Middle School Technology Integrator Specialist position.
That was moved by Anne, seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Anne.
I'm sure Todd's very happy. I mean, not Todd.
Jay.
He's only been waiting for this for, what, three years?
Yes.
Congratulations.
We haven't...
Oh.
Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands? Six in the affirmative, motion carries. Now you can be happy.
Madam Chair, continuing along this line, we have two guidance candidates for your consideration and affirmation this evening. The first is Jason Baker, and I want to just kind of do some background on Jason, because I want to be crystal clear with the board, the process we used. The reason that I want to take a little bit of time to talk about Jason is because he happens to be Mr. Allen's son-in-law. So I want to let the board know that at no point was Todd involved in the process. He was not involved in the screening, nor was he involved in the interview. I did not know who of the eight candidates we interviewed that day was related to Todd. And I sat in on the screening and on the interview directly, so that Todd could step out and feel comfortable that a senior administrator was involved in the process. So having said all of that, I wanted to make sure that the board and the community recognize that Todd was not involved at all in this process. Jason Baker, I am thrilled to be putting before you. The interesting thing about the eight interviews we had that day, and we had eight great candidates, is that Jason came in, and he has mental health credentials. And after what we went through in the high school last year, and the anxiety that many of our students feel, being able to bring in a candidate who has a mental health background is really important to us. And so, you know, for most of last year, we have been talking about contracting out mental health services, and we may still want to do that. But now we'll have somebody on our staff that we can turn to, who can help us make the right decision. So I am very pleased to put him before you. And I would point out, here's an example of a staff member who is actually coming in $20,000 less than their predecessor. So that's how it always plays. You know, if you try, one of the things that we always want to remember in Oyster River is that we have a high regard for our teaching staff, and, you know, we do have to consider our finances. But paramount to that, or equal to that, is making sure we always are hiring the best person. In this particular case, I am very pleased to put that name before you.
Anne.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the hiring of one of the guidance positions.
Jason Baker?
Jason Baker.
Seconded by Kenny. Discussion.
I say in advance, I hope he joins our wellness committee.
I think that is exactly one of our goals. Carolyn and I were just talking about that very issue today.
Great. Further discussion? Seeing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
And the next nominee that I put before you for affirmation is Kim Casamas. Did I say that right? Casamus. Wrong syllable. This is really an example of promotion, if you will, from within. Kim has done a phenomenal job at Oyster River High School as a special education caseworker. And she wants to use that skill in the guidance department. And quite honestly, we want her to use those skills that she's proven in the special ed department and the guidance department. So we're thrilled to be able to say we had an internal candidate in this case, and we are very confident that Kim joining Jason and Heather and the other Kim, that will have a whole change in face and direction for our guidance department. And in fact, in August, at the August 14th meeting, I've asked Heather to bring the team in, present them to you, and talk about her goals for the upcoming year. So with this affirmation, we will have a complete team ready to move forward on behalf of our youngsters here at Oyster River High School.
What's her last name?
It is C.A.S.S.A.M.A.S.
Thank you. Discussion.
Madam Chair, I move to affirm the hiring of the other Oyster River High School Guidance Counselor, Kim Cas...
Casmas.
Casamus. Moved by Anne, seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Anne.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. I look forward to the discussion in August about our guidance department and what Heather's plans are for the development of our college programming.
I know that you all will be excited. Todd and I and Heather have been talking about, really, this change for six months. And with the change in personnel, we think that we'll be able to customize the personnel to our needs. So we're really excited. But we can share that excitement with you in August.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Could I have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
The next action I'd ask the board to consider is the request by a paraprofessional, Caitlin Barron, for maternity leave for 12 weeks.
Is that according to...
Family medical leave and... Is that what you're asking? Or contract?
Yeah.
Or all of those things? All of those things. Law and contract.
Law and contract. Okay. Anne.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School paraprofessional maternity leave of absence from 9/8/2013 to 12/12/2013.
Yes, or a second?
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Tom. Discussion. Hearing none? Could I have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
Now I'm getting lost in all of these pieces. Yep, that's what I'm looking for.
Mohairamit.
Yep, we have a request by Mohairamit Paraprofessional for a leave of absence until January. And I'd ask you to consider that.
Or Terry Hansen.
Terry Hansen, thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Anne.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve Mohairamit Paraprofessional leave of absence until Jan, from EOI, which means what?
Beginning of year.
She had a boy?
No. It means beginning of year.
Beginning of year. Through January 2014.
And that was seconded by Kenny. Discussion.
So two paraprofessionals leaving, is that a gap in the paraprofessional...
It certainly is.
Replacement?
Yeah, if you were talking to the special ed director right now, she would tell you, yeah, she's got some pretty significant concerns that she has to fill, so.
There'll be a couple more attorneys coming.
And there's a maternity leave as well?
This one was not.
That's a medical...
Yeah.
Medical condition.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to consider a motion to approve the high school coach-volunteer positions as presented in your packet.
And they all have criminal background checks?
Absolutely. Everybody's been cleared by our A.D.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School coach and volunteer positions as slated, included in our packet.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Kenny. Discussion.
What does longevity dollars indicate?
It's a contractual clause, so if you have a coach that has spent a number of years... Do you remember, Todd, how many years before they get a longevity bonus?
Oh, it's a bonus. I see. Okay. It's a bonus on top of the annual stipend. I got it.
Further discussion? Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you. We've done the green team, and so moving on to a request by myself to amend my contract. I have the authority to amend everybody else's contract, except my own, which makes sense, because I work for you. And part of what we have done, as of this budget year, is we've eliminated the district's re... responsibility for providing cell phones. So when Sue took over, I believe she had something like 60 different cell phones in the district. And I think she got it down to about three dozen, and now we're going down to zero cell phones. And simply providing our administrators a stipend of $45 if they have data or $30 if they don't have data for the use of their personal cellphone. It becomes a taxable event, and it saves our IT director from renegotiating contracts and meditating phones and issuing phones and pulling them back. It just is an incredible waste of time, and this is much more cost-effective and far fewer the cellphone obligation. So it's an amendment to mine to allow me to have the same benefit that I've provided the administrators.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the superintendent's contract for cellphone usage.
Made by Anne, seconded by Kenny. Further discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next piece of the motions is really to consider changing the order of the district's our own agenda. And a great example happened when Ed said, "Do you mind if we move this item up to the top of the agenda?" And that happens to us pretty regularly, really, if you think about it. There's always somebody who says, geez, you know, we have a guest in the audience, or we have a discussion going on, and we have a guest. Can we move that up? And as the chair and vice chair and I were talking about it, you know, really, the order of how we do things doesn't make sequential sense. So it makes sense for us to consider having a discussion about something and then having a motion later in the agenda. But having a motion first and then having discussion has always been awkward. So in the conversation, we attempted to present a different order to the agenda to see if the board itself would consider a permanent reordering of the agenda so it could flow. It's sort of awkward the way we have it now.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to consider the new agenda format.
Consider or approve?
It says...
I think consider because we would do the same routine with policy. We would look at it again in August 14.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Kenny. I just want you to know for my summer reading, I've been reading Robert's Rules, and it says that the first business order of business should be the approval of the minutes of the last meeting so that you have that kind of finished before you start the next meeting. So, Anne?
So I see where you have added approval of the minutes and you've removed board approvals. What did we do with board approvals? It's gone. Because what Dr. Morse is talking about is...
Oh, that's the minutes. So we just changed the word approval to approval of the minutes?
Approval of minutes.
Because that's always what's there is the minutes.
Okay.
So it's really crystal clear what's being approved?
That's how it used to be.
Oh, it was.
Tom?
Just to go back to why it was changed, and it was my... I think I supported a change that we're reversing, and I'll support this reversal. But I think my concern was that we were making decisions really late in the evening. And I think we talked about having a policy where the board, the meeting would end at nine, we could extend it by a vote. This is something we talked about as a possible policy. Because I think my own personal feeling is votes that are taken 9:30, 10 o'clock, you know, that's not a good time to make a decision. So that... So that, at least our sense is that we might put forward a policy to have a meeting end at nine, and we could extend it by, you know, majority vote if we need to. But that kind of like to aim for nine is a closing time. So whether we can do it or not, but I think when we make decisions into the evening, that's not a good... That's not good. So I think this will work if it doesn't push the decision-making late into the evening.
And what Tom is alluding to is a policy change, and we are in the process of putting that language into current policy and to put in front of the policy committee.
Okay.
So we could have that as a first read on August 14 as well.
And we do have a motion to consider this? All those in favor? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. And the other piece, the other conversation I was having with the chair and vice chair is we never actually approved the list of priorities. We went through literally a couple of months of establishing them, and we got to the place where we had consensus, but we never really actually had a motion from the board to say, "These are our priorities," and get it approved from the body. So I'm asking you to consider doing that this evening.
Could you share the process that we went through?
Sure.
There was no discussion on our part?
Yep. The board presented me with a list of priorities, and then we organized those. Each board member, independent of the other, sent me a list of what their personal priorities were from the list. And then I took each board member's work and sat with Wendy and my administrative assistant, and we collated it. And like golf, low score wins. So the order is the lowest number became the top priority, and we listed them accordingly. And we presented them in full board, to the full body, once. And then Kenny said maybe we should do it one more time, just to be sure. And we sent it, we did it one more time, just to make sure we had it right, because we were using several different versions of the truth in terms of calculating order. And so in the end, we had consensus in the public meeting, and we just needed to affirm that work.
Do we have a motion to approve? Made by Tom, seconded by Kenny. Discussion?
There are some items that are on the lower half of the form that I interpret as being our obligations as a board member. While budget goals floated to the top as number one, that's our most important goal. I mean, it's our... That's our job. So perhaps it's what... Maybe there's something else that's meant rather than being, having oversight of the budget here that is for our consideration. And if there is, then I'd like that explanation so I can appreciate why it's in the list.
Yeah. I think oversight is a given. What the collective priorities of the body are is not a given. As an individual member at the table, you may have different priorities than Tom. And so we have to work through those priorities collectively and public. And so it's not the oversight piece, it's establishing the collective goals of the body, which we will start that discussion later this evening and with the intention of completing it at the next meeting.
And I think the same thing happens or falls with the capital improvement plan. Again, that's an obligation of the board. That should be ongoing work that we do.
Yeah. I think that the issue there, Anne, is that the public needs to know what the priorities are in the cap... Because the capital improvement plan has, is multifaceted and multimillion dollars' worth of work, which we can never complete in a given year. So the discussion there is what are the priorities for the budget we're in and the budget that's coming up? It's not the plan itself, but establishing what those focus of interest are for the body.
I guess my point is that there are other items on this list that are not as critical and aren't our responsibility on a year-to-year, year-in, year-out basis. So having it being relegated to a number as a result of a calculation sends a message that I'm not sure that's how we should be treating the capital improvement plan.
Well, I mean, it's a process that I've used for about 25 years, and it helps clarify where the board is, this body is, in public. So, you know, it's not... The other thing I should say is the list doesn't become exclusive because, like last year, we had issues that came up that we had to address that were never considered in this kind of prioritizing. This is more, these are the known issues. We already have attacked some of these issues. I anticipate that we'll get through most of these issues in the course of the year. And I just think you're projecting to the public, you know, what it is we're going to be working on. It's sort of a communications tool.
And then the other element of this is our strategic plan and how all these items play into that. And so then they gain another layer or another persona outside of this list when we address the strategic plan.
Yeah. I would say also, yeah, I agree with that. And, you know, we are very actively engaged in the three chapters of the strategic plan, which I'll re-put on later. When those are complete, those absolutely will influence administrative direction once you've adopted those plans. It may not necessarily even come onto the list after this year because the plan will be done. It will start influencing the budget and policy decisions. But for this particular year, since it's taken, you know, since 2011 to get from that point to this point, I felt it was important that we, you know, let the world know where we've got that set as a priority.
My understanding, as I did this, was not just the importance of things, but the timeline. We can't in one meeting do all 17 things. So the time.
Yeah, it's accountability, too. You know, as a body of seven...
When is this going to come before us?
Exactly.
I'd like to take an opportunity to explain how I approach this because I think I sort of was going the way you were. A couple of them I wrote not applicable because I felt that those are the most baseline functions of our school board. We have to do this. We have to set budget goals. And then there was one that I put not applicable because, in fact, it said foster communication between the board and staff. We, under law, are only... We only communicate through the superintendent to the staff. And so although, I mean, we may, as a parent, I may speak to staff members about my children. As a board, our communication has to be directed through Dr. Morse, and then he would facilitate further. So I just, I didn't want that to be misconstrued because for any reason. That's why I wanted to raise that, just point it out.
Further discussion? Are you ready for a vote? Can I have a show of hands, please?
Thank you.
Six in the affirmative. Motion carries. Now, we get to some...
And the last item on Board Action Items is a motion to approve the list of attached policies.
Tom?
I would like to approve the following policies for first read. One is establishing criteria for special education evaluations. The second is complaints about school personnel. The third is reconsideration, reconsiderations of instructional materials and procedure. The fourth, public conduct on school property. And the fifth, visitors to the schools.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Anne. Discussion, Tom?
I just have a... On reconsiderations of instructional materials and procedures, this changes that gives you the final say, right?
Correct.
In terms of if somebody makes a complaint. I'm wondering if whether an additional sentence could be put in so that you communicate then to... Because I think we should know if a decision has been made.
Yep.
Whether that could be added. Because I'm fine with you making the decision, the superintendent making the decision, but I think if something like that happens, we should be aware of what's happened.
Isn't that what... I guess I'm confused by the two policies, KEC and KECR, because it looks like KECR does just that.
Okay.
Brings it back to the board and gives out a whole... I'm not sure there's sort of...
Okay, maybe I missed...
Two slightly... They're not conflicting, but there's two different policies.
The R is the...
The R is the regulations on the procedure.
But the R goes on... The R doesn't make, give the superintendent the final decision.
Right.
It goes back to the board again through the KRC policy.
Because we haven't adjusted the R yet because the board hasn't approved the new policy. If the new policy goes through, then I'll strike that language and say, "Report to, report all complaints to the board, all decisions to the board." I'll change the procedure.
Okay, so we're not approving KECR then at this point?
Correct. We've just rewritten, or we've modified the policy, and what Dr. Morse is saying is that until the board says yes, he's not going to rewrite the procedure that follows the policy.
And for clarity's sake, Ed, your question is valid in the sense that it does say KEC and R. The reason that I always put the procedures in front of you is because often the board wants to know, well, how do you implement this policy? What's the practice, what's the real-life practice behind this policy? And so that language in R is administrative and doesn't require the board to approve. But I put it in front of you so that you can see what is, what we actually do.
So if we approve the KEC...
Then I'll rewrite.
Then you'll rewrite it so it'll just... But you'll still have this procedure, but that procedure won't go to the board, it will go to you.
Correct. Got you. Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Policies for second read adoption?
I'd like to approve the following policies for second read adoption. Approval of handbooks and directives, policy CHCA. School, community, and home relations, policy KA. Public information program, policy KDA. And use of students in public information program, KDCA. Looks like a vision test. I'd like to approve, move that those be approved for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Kenny. Discussion? Kenny?
On the communication policy where we're citing the different forms of communication, is it worthwhile to also add website and the school video channel to that? Because that's going to be, those are big sources of communication.
Yeah, where examples are listed, it makes sense.
Okay. Anne?
With regard to policy CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives, Dr. Morse, is there an R? Do we write an R for CHCA?
Not yet. That was the one that you had a big discussion on, on the meeting that Carolyn ran in my place.
Right.
And we haven't done that work yet.
Because part of the discussion during that policy meeting was the need of considering a template to be available. And while I appreciate that that doesn't need to be written into policy, I...
Yep, we actually have had that discussion several times, Carolyn and I, and we'll get on that. The template can be relatively universal, but at the same time, we have to make sure that the flexibility is there to address the differences between an elementary school and high school. So we will definitely do that.
Thank you.
It is on our list.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And...
Tom?
I'd like to make a motion for policy deletion, communication with parents, policy FB.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Kenny. This was felt to be not useful anymore, uncovered in other places. Discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries. Okay.
So Carolyn doesn't have a report this evening. You can tell she doesn't because she's not dressed for it.
She looks nice.
She's doing good. Restraining herself.
Yes, so am I.
So I just wanted to do a quick update on tuition this evening in terms of where we are. Al and Tom and I have met with, continue to meet with, Newmarket, Deerfield, and Barrington. And we're getting to the place where we think it's important that we have a very detailed presentation on where we are in August at our board meeting. We had an extension in... in Deerfield from June 30th to September 30th. We, meaning myself and Tom and Al, don't quite know what that means, other than that Deerfield is continuing to talk to us and Concord, as well as Pembroke. The Barrington discussions, there was a night where things really got definitive, and then the following meeting, they got less definitive. So it was, where we are with them is relatively vague. And the Newmarket piece is getting more and more definitive. And so we're feeling as a team that we need to bring it to the full board and outline where we are in preparation for a fall meeting, because the timeline is there, clock is ticking. And we know that Newmarket wants to be able to present what their desire is to their public in the fall. Doesn't mean we have to react in the fall. In fact, we're thinking we'll react during budget season. But we're, we're pretty confident sitting here tonight that we're going to get a definitive offer that we would need to consider from Newmarket. And unsure of that with Deerfield and Barrington. So we continue to talk with all three towns. We're engaged in those conversations. We have meetings set up for August, and new meetings being put on the calendar for August. But I think we're at that place where a full-fledged presentation with detail is timely.
Have the numbers fluctuated at all from each community, to your knowledge of how many students they would submit to us?
Not really. I mean, they, the numbers that we started out with, with Deerfield, were about 188 students. And they wanted to reserve the right to allow 10% of those students' choice. So that's about 19 kids, less than 188. So it's 171, 69, or whatever it is. And Barrington has been growing, as we know. And this past year, they were at about 63 kids. As Todd is looking at enrollment, you're hovering around 80, 79, 80?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. And, you know, the Barrington proposal sees that growing to approximately 125. The uniqueness of their proposal is that it's really dependent on parent choice. So it's a very soft 125, very hard 63, a very hard 83, I guess, because we have the kids, you know, enrolled. And then Newmarket, the number is, has actually reduced, because they updated their enrollment projections. And we've been talking publicly about 300, but it's actually close to 250. And they have about 60 of their students enrolled in vocational education. So they would only be here for half a day, and they'd be at the Volk School. 30 of them would be here for half a day, and they'd maybe be at Volk School, and then that reverses. So those are the student numbers. The conversation around tuition ranges anywhere from, I would say, a low of about 13.2 to a high of our actual cost, which is around 16-plus. So the three towns have approached us in quite different ways, and a lot of work and dedication by Al and Tom, and a lot of work by Sue and myself to try to capture, you know, everything as accurately as possible. So things are going well. I would say the conversations are going well at all three communities, and I think ultimately, our community will have very clear choices to make.
Can you, Todd, could you share with us how many students we currently have in our vocational program?
Last year, we had 26.
Twenty-six.
That's about 4% or 5% of our student body.
So this then triples the amount of kids we have in.
It would. And that's, that's a good thing. I mean, we have three different service providers for our vote program. All of them have unique offerings. I mean, the obvious one to the public is Dover, but we also are sending them to Somersworth and, what's the third one, Todd?
Rochester.
Rochester.
Would that cause us to look more closely at our own internal industrial arts program, and whether we enlarge that to serve these students?
No, not necessarily. I think that our program is really intended to give students a kind of a flavor or a taste. It's not intended to be anything more than that. If they want a comprehensive program, then we have three different opportunities for them to do it.
Thank you.
Very cost-effective way of doing it. And the towns that provide them are providing really excellent programs. So we're very fortunate. In some parts of the state, they only have one Volk School they go to, and we actually have a choice of three.
Kenny?
I guess I comment in a couple of questions. I, you know, in hearing of Deerfield's delaying once again their decision, I can't help but take that, that they're really not that interested in coming here, knowing that there really is Newmarket who is very eager to come here. And I think if that was a priority of theirs, they would be really stepping up to the task.
Sure. I caution reading into it too much, because the other read of that, Kenny, could be that they're so torn that they couldn't make a decision. And so that's, you know, but we really don't know what the internal decision-making process is.
That's fair. Do you, and a couple of questions. Do you know if Newmarket is working on a Plan B?
Well, their only Plan B is to build a school. I mean, they, they tried other suitors over the past. And unless, you know, they've come up with a different option, it's either us or a new school, I would think.
They haven't, I know they wanted to keep their students all together.
Mm-hmm.
They have not at all talked about maybe seeing if their school, their students could be distributed through some of the area schools.
They have not, no. No, that would be the Barrington model, and they are not interested in the choice model whatsoever. They want to know where their kids are, and they want to be able to work with the school system directly that is serving their children. So they've been very definitive about that. We've, we've actually had, I've broached it privately, and we've had it in our public conversations, that they really want to have their kids together.
Okay. And one of, I'm sorry, one other question. With Barrington, do you get a, and I know that Barrington emphasizes that choice for their students, Co-Brown, Dover, maybe they're entertaining Somersworth, and certainly our school. Do you think the community knows that if we accept Newmarket, that they will no longer have the choice of Oyster River?
Well, the negotiating team knows that. I mean, their team knows that if we end up with either, with Newmarket, that that pushes Barrington, you know, off the table. I, as recently, and Tom is privy to the communication, because he's part of the team, I sent a communication to Gail, a question of the superintendent today, indicating, you know, what our needs are to have a win-win. And, you know, they've been great to talk to. Deerfield's been great to talk to. Newmarket's been great to talk to. I would say that Barrington is in the most difficult situation, because they really want to hang on to the concept of choice. And as a result, they can't make any guarantees, because they don't know what their parents are going to choose. And the other place that they're struggling with is a really monstrous increase in cost. I mean, crippling, very dramatic. They've had a really good financial relationship with Dover. And Dover is not offering that same relationship in the renewal. We're not, Co-Brown isn't. And so when you see that in detail, you can, you can compare per student costs between the four districts. And by far, Barrington's per student cost is, is the lowest. It's not even close. And it's largely because, you know, when they made this arrangement 10 years ago with Dover, Dover really gave them a heck of a deal. It's like they bought a Cadillac for, you know, a Chevrolet price. And now, of course, all four school systems have said, well, you know, we're not repeating Dover's offer. We're saying this is, these are our costs, and this is what you need to consider as you move forward. So, you know, they're struggling because regardless of how they approach this, their cost per student is going to jump astronomically in one year. And it has little to do with anything other than the days of Dover, you know, providing them incredible discount. Really is over. And so they're, rightfully so. I mean, if it was happening to us, we would be a bit in a panic as well. I mean, they're kind of, they're scared of the costs that they're seeing from all four school systems, because it's a dramatic change for them. Dramatic.
Thank you.
Does that mean that it will be relatively cheaper for the parents to send their children to Oyster River then, if they're, if the cost, if Barrington's going to increase their cost, have to increase their cost per student, to kind of meet the bottom line, that they're now spending for Dover? And that means it'll be cheaper for students to come here to Oyster River?
It doesn't necessarily, because they also have a unique arrangement with their parents. So a rate is established, and this particular arrangement, if the rate is established by Dover, and then Co-Brown and Oyster River come in and say, well, you know, it costs us far more to educate our children than what you're getting charged by Dover. So we'll educate your children, but it's going to be at, you know, higher cost. What happens is the parents in Barrington pay the difference right now. So if the Dover cost goes up, and the, and our difference is, is the same, then the parents would be paying the same. But if the Dover cost goes up and our costs go up, it's possible. And this, and the way that they do business, that the parents would be paying more. And that could impact the number of parents who choose to come to Oyster River or Co-Brown.
But we don't know that, that number yet. We don't know how we stand relative to what the new Dover cost is going to be?
Well, it's interesting. We kind of do, because Barrington's put their stuff on their webpage. And so it's a, it's sort, it is in the public. And, you know, all four superintendents have a great working relationship. And so we know what we're doing, and talk with Gail, and talk with each other. So it's not this kind of situation where, I mean, Barrington asked for proposals, so those are public documents. All four of us submitted proposals, those are public documents. And so we've all, all seen each other's documents. So it's not like a secret bid, or, you know, we all, we all know what each other's doing. That's why I know, and from the superintendent and their team, that their costs are going to go up significantly. And, you know, they use the figure like 20%, 30%, Tom, in our conversations. I mean, it's that big a jump. So they're, they're pretty nervous. So, yeah, it's sort of public, but it's never been presented as a comparison.
But it just sounds like if they're going to have bigger costs, and if our difference between now, between us and Dover is less, then that means the parents will be putting out less money.
Not necessarily, because our costs are going up.
But if it's the difference between Dover, oh, the difference between, we're going up as much, will be that same amount more expensive than Dover is?
More or less.
More or less, okay.
I haven't done that particular calculation, so it's in the ballpark.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So expect, you know, an in-depth presentation in August. Then the strategic plan, I'm pleased to report that Sue, with the finance component of it, is, is well-engaged. I'm well-engaged with the communications piece, and Carolyn's gearing up the academic piece. So the game plan so far seems to be playing out that we would have two of the chapters ready for your consideration, perhaps as early as the fall, September-ish kind of thing. And then we knew from the get-go that Carolyn's piece is far, far more complex, and will require greater time. But we would have a draft ready during budget season for you to look at there. So the time, the time we've been putting in this summer is well-spent. The people who have volunteered to do the work are awesome. They're doing a great job. They're coming in on summer evenings or summer days. Sue managed to get her team to come in in the daytime. I'm not quite as quick as Sue, so my team's meeting in the evening. But it's really going well. And Mary J. McCallum, the consultant, is working correctly with Carolyn, so we can get the academic piece, at least roughed out, so that we can, it can influence the budget for the upcoming school year. And so all is going really good there. I'm very pleased with the progress we're making. And then the redistricting piece is, I just wanted to say that I'm working on another idea. Not nearly as enthusiastically as I did the all-day kindergarten, but I'm still not convinced that redrawing a bus line every time it needs to be redrawn is the way to do business. And just because it's always been done that way, it always bugs me when people say, well, that's the way we always did it. There's got to be a different way of solving this issue. And I actually had a communication from a teacher that sparked this idea, who started out by saying, Jim, I really haven't followed all of the work that you've done, but I really appreciate the effort. But have you considered, and is have you considered, I hadn't considered, which was really great. And it made me start to think about potential of still dealing with kindergarten kids, and the idea of Massway just being coming, the kindergarten center. Doesn't have to be K through two and three through four. But if we started all the children out at Massway, and then in first grade, they went to their appropriate geographic school, neighborhood school, then we, again, have fixed the imbalance between the two schools with a group of children that haven't started school yet, that haven't established friendships yet, et cetera. And they would still be at their neighborhood school in grades one through four. And as time goes on, who knows, maybe one through five, as we have that discussion later on. So I am in conversation with Lisa Hoppe about the implications of a busing. So she has actually, she sent me an email. And I brought it with me. She, she thinks the idea is viable. It might cause additional busing in the PM, but in the morning and at noon, she thinks it's, it's doable. And so she's working on more of the detail around this idea. And what I, what I would love to do, quite honestly, is be able to bring this, this concept of redistricting, equalizing enrollment between the two schools, sorry, you know, to conclusion either in August or September. Because I really feel strongly that the appropriate thing to do is to inform parents of our decision a year in advance. And then nobody's panicking. They've, they've taken care of their personal issues, daycare issues. And who knows, maybe the budget process will figure out a way of getting to all-day K. But if we don't, I'd like to be able to say to parents, this is the plan. So that's kind of where I'm headed. It may cost us a bus run in the afternoon to pull it off. But equalizing the enrollment is far, to me, academically, is, is worth the price of an extra bus, if we can make sure the kids are getting equitable services between the two buildings. So I talked to the principal at Massway. She was pretty keen on it. She felt she could pull it off. I talked to Dennis. He was pretty keen on it. He was comfortable with it. But obviously, I need to do more work on it. So Plan A in the beginning would be to see if we can do just kindergarten, along with the normal grades at Massway, and then one through four at Mohermit. If we go to all-day K, then we can play around with the arrangement, the way that we've talked about earlier. So I know that's a budget process issue, but kind of projecting to the parents in the fall, at the latest, where we're headed, I think will make them comfortable. You know, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we won't have kindergarten parents who want to choke me, but that's, but that's okay. I mean, we've got to make a decision that ultimately, you know, we can stand behind. And so I'm trying to get us there.
I think it sounds like a win-win, and for two reasons. One, the overcrowding at Mohermit's just unacceptable. And I don't have children there, but if I did, I think I would be a little disturbed that same overcrowding doesn't affect other schools. And it's, it's just not acceptable. And then the other opportunity is, obviously, some of these children, after kindergarten, are going to be moved to Mohermit. And so we have our own little scientific experiment, if you will, to see how those kids manage that transition from one school to the other. And if we do it carefully and gently, and we find that there really isn't a big deal with making that transition, then I think we can relook at changing our schools to a potential K3, 4, 5, 6, because we've learned with our own children that they can manage a transition, and that it's, could be a very positive thing.
I have a question about the PEP program. It's gotten moved around several times. We were to move forward with a, with a tuitioning agreement, bringing in a large number of students. Would the PEP program remain at the high school? Would it, are we planning for that to stay here? Are we planning for that to stay here if we were to bring in several hundred new students into the high school?
When Todd and I were talking about 300 students, we certainly were thinking that the PEP program would have to move. We haven't addressed it through the various scenarios, the latest scenarios. I'm suspecting that if we're over 200 students, he would be saying, yeah, we should relocate PEP.
I think, you know, I'm just thinking about, there's a number of families where their children do take part in the PEP program, and if it were to be at Massway, or it used to be, that might also, you know, they'll have maybe, you know, up to maybe three years before they would go to Moheramit. I don't know if that would make things better or worse, but we may want to consider, you know, that element as well. It kind of, everything's intertwined, right? So I just think that we can't forget about what happens with those young children, and just making sure we could serve them properly.
But based on the tuition conversations, where PEP is good where it is for the next couple of years, and so we're okay there, but beyond that, we would have to be projecting out what our intents are.
Okay.
But thank you for that, Megan. I hadn't put that in the equation. I think that completes my reports, Madam Chair.
And we have business administrator.
Yep, Sue. So I'm going to introduce the topic, and then Sue and I can have this discussion with the board. As I came in last year, the board had set particular budget goals, and I struggled to understand what they meant, and asked many clarifying questions over the course of developing the first budget I developed for the district. And so one of, the thought that Sue and I want to present to you is a what-if. What if between now and the next board meeting, we articulated what we think the budget goals we would have would be, rather than kind of presenting you with a blank piece of paper, and all of you write down what you would have as budget goals, and then we go through, you know, a long debate over what this means or what that means? If Sue and I took the initiative and presented what we thought rational budget goals would be and presented them to you, then you would be reacting against, you know, your professionals in saying, yeah, this makes sense, or what do you mean by this, and how would this go, and, you know, that kind of thing. And so to try to organize the conversation around our ideas, and then nothing prevents the board from adding a new idea or modifying a new idea, because that's your job. Our job would be to kind of structure the conversation. And so what we were looking for, and I don't know if you want to add here, Sue?
No, just.
Is if that makes sense to the body, and if it does make sense to the body, then we'll go ahead and do that work and bring it back to you for you to critique, add to, modify, edit, delete, and we will have no hard feelings. We just want to have the conversation, you know, kind of start with where we think we should be.
So when we look at the budget, we have to consider the tuition and the non, you know, what, we're going to have to have different views, and this is a moving issue. Do you have any ideas about how we handle that? I mean, we don't want to waste a lot, you know, time with the administration, but, you know, we also have to recognize that we're not going to know, we're really not going to know even until March, right? Because this, whatever we recommend is going to go to the voters anyway, so they could vote it up or down. We don't know. So how, I guess, how are we going to handle that?
So we actually have breathing room.
Okay.
I think part of the misconception about the tuition piece is that it's happening, you know, immediately. We actually are still two years out.
That's true.
So, but I think your question is still a valid question, Megan, because I think the board should say to us, you know, assuming this happens, what do you see as a projection? Because it's, we should be thinking about the next two years significantly because of the tuition issue, and get a sense of that.
Because if we go with Newmarket, there's going to be additional staffing hired.
Right.
And we don't, you know, so I think, yeah, it's, we're going to have to look at it in the context of going one path or another path, or...
And we are, you know, we haven't, you know, got to the point where we've put numbers to paper, but Sue and I are constantly talking through those issues and implications, and I've been working all week on the what-ifs and giving them to her and saying, what do you think about this, and react to that. So it's very much in the forefront of our thoughts, Megan. Even though it's not for the following year, we have to be thinking about it.
When we look at, I hate to go back to this because you just talked about the tuitioning, but when you prepare this detailed report, and I know Tom raised something about, what new programs do you envision being added? I think that's going to be very, very critical in the decision-making process. So if we did do this, is it going to allow us to do?
X, Y, and Z.
X, Y, and Z. Foreign language, elementary schools, richer, you know, music, fine arts offerings, whatever. I don't know. What is that going to be? What is it going to give additive to the academic enrichment of our children?
And then the potential flip side, what might we lose?
Right.
Yep. We, I mean, if you had, if you were inside those conversations with Tom and Al and I, that just is very, what Megan is saying right now echoes exactly the conversations we're having as your team. You know, how do we do the value-added piece? If we're going to bring in tuition students, as much, I would, it's really hard for people to understand because not engaged directly in these conversations, but there hasn't been a meeting that we haven't had where Tom or Al hasn't said. And so the reason we would do this is because we want to enhance the programming for our students, and we want to address lessening the impact of our taxpayers. It's always that order, you know? What's the value added by, by doing this? And what's the impact if we don't do this?
When you meet with these towns, are there full boards in attendance?
Nope.
It's just a select number?
Number to us, yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering if it would make sense to have us, you know, we're getting closer maybe to have our full board attend and have a meeting of the two boards?
You know, sitting here, yeah, sitting here, I'm, you know, I can say that I'm fairly confident that we're going to get an offer from one of these communities very, very quickly, and then our community will process that offer for months.
I just, I guess I just, maybe I'm overanalyzing this, but I feel like so much of this, these issues are intertwined for our own, you know, you can present something, I'm going to judge it based on, you know, what happens with the tuitioning, what, you know, it's so, it's so difficult to not look at all that.
Yep. It's a very complex issue.
Can I just say that one of the things that's, how you added, when you, when you hire new people, as I think, in the science position tonight, you bring in, you can create new things by bringing in new people who have expertise in areas that we may not have had before. So it's, there's a kind of dynamic there that could be really positive, because you'd have to hire more people, but, you know, what areas, what do they bring in?
Absolutely.
Given the kind of pool, applicant pools we've had, you could have some really exciting new things happen just by hiring teachers to meet the demand of the students.
I can say that this is where the philosophy of our high school really begins to stand out in terms of the choice issue. Because in most traditional high schools, you'd add a staff member, and it would be they're the biology teacher, or they're the physics teacher. But in our high school, we actually have the opportunity, because of the philosophy, to really create within science courses that we've never had before. And English, I mean, English is the perfect example of that in our high school. I mean, they're, the kids have multiple really great choices. And so I think Tom's absolutely right. You know, if we add a staff member, it isn't to fill a traditional spot, it's to create another opportunity, or multiple opportunities for all of the students.
Good.
Yeah, good job.
Surprise us.
Just sitting.
And the student is not here.
Excuse me, did we give a go-ahead for you to come?
I think, I felt comfortable that was, seeing a lot of non-heds for Sue and I to take a shot at putting the goals up there for you guys to react to.
And is kindergarten in that goal?
Wouldn't be mine. We'll see whether it survives.
Full-time.
Yes, I do.
Do we have any others?
Al's not here, I guess not.
Announcements and commendations from the district.
All right.
I just wanted to commend the teachers that have started work on the call for proposals. I had mentioned at a prior meeting that we had 33 proposals submitted. Some of the work would begin this summer, some would be begun and then completed, and then others would start this summer and carry out throughout the whole school year. And I have to say, the work that the teachers have started during their summertime on some of the unique ideas and concepts that they put forward in their proposals has really carried out. We've had next-generation science standards, all the middle school science teachers come together, the high school science teachers looking at articulating that bio course that's going to be happening. We've had the science program, 512, they've been, the group has been working on that as well. Math committee, we've been meeting, middle school, high school math committee has been working this summer. So there's a lot of wonderful things that have been happening this summer, and we're in mid-July. So I want to commend them for their, for their effort and the work they've been doing so far. So I want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? The board have anything? Moving right along. Do we have any discussion items? No?
Nope.
And we've done the sustainability. And now we have the minutes to approve. Tom?
Oh, I'm wondering whether we can hold off till our next meeting to approve the 7, 10, 13 minutes, because my memory of Al's motion was that it covered more than the finances for footwork, but that was, that's my memory, and I'd like to have him here just to get his sense of that motion. Because my understanding was that all of the issues that Todd raised would have to be addressed. And the motion as stated in the minute says it's, it's the finances. So I think, I think we need to clear that up, and I'd like to have Al here to, if that's all right.
If there's no objection, reschedule that item and take up the 7, 10, 13 minutes.
So we need, can still approve the 6, 19?
No.
I think just the reverse.
It's the reverse.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Was the 6, 19?
I'm sorry, yeah, 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 I got it.
You had it right. Tom had it backwards.
I move to accept the 7, 10 minutes.
Okay, move by ten. Second by. A hand.
And I need to abstain, I wasn't present.
Uh, discussion, hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Five in the affirmative? Were you here?
I wasn't here, but you want me, I don't care. I can abstain if you want. Didn't want to, I didn't get it in, so I didn't want to be a no, so.
Okay, five in the affirmative. One abstention. And then we have public comment. Mr. Taylor.
David Taylor from Durham. I appreciate the apology from the chair tonight at the beginning of the meeting, especially since in my judgment, you did not violate the right to know. It speaks to your grace that you nevertheless apologized. What I think speaks even greater volume was the total silence from the board member who did actually violate the right to know. No acknowledgement or recognition, no contrition, nothing. I've asked the board to please take some serious effective steps to stop these right-to-know violations, and I await something serious from the board. Thank you.
We are looking into it. Thank you. Anybody else? Closing actions. Any future agenda item for the list, which will go beyond what we approved today for priorities? Future meeting dates, 7/31 will be manifest, and on 8/14, we have a regular, regular meeting. And we need no public, non-public session adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Tom? Ken? Discussion, could we have a show of hands on adjournment, please? Six in the affirmative, motion carries.